Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 26, 2020. We are in our legislative meeting tonight, and I'll call the meeting to order. We will take a moment and have a minute of silent meditation. Thank you. At this, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion by Jack, second by April. All those in favor of adopting the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye. April?
Aye.
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. At this moment on our agenda, we have a presentation by Mayor Jacob Day. Mr. Mayor, are you prepared for your presentation?
Good evening. Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, our, our folks are not on the call. They're having technical difficulties. We may want to just wait a moment.
Okay. We can, we can do the consent agenda and then come back once they get on if you want to do that.
If you're okay with that, Mayor.
That's fine. I'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt, to approve the consent agenda.
The move.
Second.
Second.
By April and a second by Michelle. Ms. Nichols? Kim?
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the May 11th, 2020 legislative session minutes, the May 18th, 2020 special meeting minutes, and resolution number 3035 approving the appointment of Matt Drew to Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for term ending May 2023. And that's it for the consent agenda tonight.
Thank you. Any comments by the council? Jack?
No, none.
April?
No.
Angela?
None.
Ms. Gregory?
None.
All those in favor of the adopting or approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Ms. Gregory?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Heath?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Mr. Mayor, do you have any guests on?
Sorry about that. Yes. So first of all, I, I believe Mr. Drew is on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Matt Drew, are you still on?
I am. I am.
We want to thank you for your service on the, on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and also for all the other things you, you do for our city. So we, we appreciate your service to our community.
Absolutely. And I appreciate your faith in letting me back on for, for a second run. So I'm very excited about it.
Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Chair, the, I know that Colonel Mine shine is on and Chief Duncan. And there's Major Cole.
How you doing?
Hey, how are you, Major?
Doing well. Thank you.
Good. So if it pleases the council, I want to just take a minute to say that we are, we're lucky to have someone who has given so much to our community over his long career. And I know all of you have had the good fortune at one point or another to interact with Major Cole. And I, I want to ensure that the chief and/or the colonel have the opportunity to say anything they want to say. But what I have tonight that I want to share is a proclamation. So, and this proclamation reads, whereas Criminal Investigation Division Commander Scott Cole is retiring after a distinguished 28-year career in law enforcement with the Salisbury City Police Department, and it's appropriate to acknowledge his outstanding career achievement. Scott Cole's story began in Cumberland, Maryland, where he was born in 1967, went on to graduate from Fort Hall High School in 1985. Scott's sense of responsibility and service to others led him to pursue a criminal justice major at Allegheny Community College, where he received an Associate of Arts degree in 1987. The western shores loss was the eastern shores gain, as is often true. When Scott began working as a seasonal police officer in Ocean City, enjoying three successful summers prior to signing on in July of 1992 as a probationary police officer with Salisbury City Police Department. During the early years of his career, Scott assumed uniform patrol responsibilities, where he served as a field training officer for new recruits and was also assigned to the community-oriented policing program, where he focused on problem solving at the neighborhood level, until he achieved the rank of detective within the Criminal Investigation Division in 1995, where he served until he was promoted to corporal and reassigned to patrol. Scott furthered, furthered his education as he continued to promote through the ranks, earning a Bachelor of Arts degree in Behavioral Science in 2000 from Willington College, and achieving the rank of Sergeant in 2002 and Lieutenant in 2009, where he served in leadership and supervisory roles in both Criminal Investigation and Patrol Divisions. Significant milestones in Scott's career include his December 2009 graduation from the 239th Session of the Federal Bureau of Investigations National Academy, and his November 2014 promotion to the rank of Captain, which saw him take the reins as Division Commander of CID or Criminal Investigation Divisions, followed ultimately by his promotion to Major that same year to become the Administrative Commander, followed by becoming Operations Commander in 2017, followed ultimately by retiring as Commander of the Criminal Investigation Division in 2020. Commander Cole is commended for his earning no less than four exceptional duty awards, four commendations, two unit citations, two honorable service awards, 15 letters of appreciation, three certificates of appreciation, one Officer of the Year Award from the Salisbury Exchange Club, and one Chief's Award during his 28-year career with the Salisbury City Police Department. So now therefore I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim May 26, 2020, a Scott Allen Cole Day in our city in recognition of 28 years of dedicated public service to our community as a career police officer. With gratitude and appreciation for his passion for seeking justice for victims and working to solve seemingly unsolvable and complex crimes during the almost 14 of 28 years he served in the Criminal Investigation Division, and with sincere best wishes on behalf of Salisbury City staff and all of our citizens for an enjoyable and well-deserved retirement. Congratulations, Scott.
Thank you very much. I have been blessed to work with some of the finest women in law enforcement over the past 28 years, but I could not have done that without the support of my family. I want to thank them for that. It truly has been an honor and a privilege to serve our community, and I appreciate this recognition tonight. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Major. And if I can, Mr. Vice President, if I can allow the chief to make remarks if she wants to.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. You know, police officers are incredible and special individuals who take an oath of office to protect others, and they find within them the courage to confront wrongdoing on a daily basis. Scott, you are one of those exceptional individuals in our community. Congratulations on your retirement. It's well deserved. Your 28 years of unwavering service to your fellow officers and to the Salisbury community have been a study in professionalism and dedication. I can say without reservation, Scott, that as a colleague and as a friend, you've inspired me to keep the faith and stay passionate about policing. You've earned retirement, Scott. All of the thousands of calls for service that you responded to, all of the criminal cases that you investigated, that you led here with this agency in partnership, not only with other agencies, but with members of your community. They show just what it means, just what you mean to policing. All the time you spent away from your family in service to others. It's a life, a career, a path well spent in service to others. To my colleagues here in the agency, we should never forget that the best way to show our gratitude for someone's service, someone's tenure, especially at their retirement, is to live up to the example they set. Scott, thank you for leading the way. Thank you for your mentorship. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your service as a police officer to this city and to this agency, and congratulations.
Thank you, Chief. I really appreciate the kind words. It's been a pleasure working with everyone there.
Absolutely.
Colonel Mine shine, did you, would you like to say something?
Got you for three more days, Scott. So I'll be prepared to come to work tomorrow at eight o'clock. And it's recognition like this makes me think I might only be able to put in another 10 or 15 years myself at the most, you know, to get me to 40, but I'm probably out of here myself.
Well, you set the bar high, that's for sure.
It's been a pleasure working with you, Scott. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Have some good times.
And I'll, I'll take a moment here. I know that there are a couple officers on, on the call as well. So Brandon Caden and Jason Harrington. I didn't know if either one of them would like to say something. Maybe not. Okay. Well, Major Cole, on behalf of the Salisbury City Council.
Brandon is trying to, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
Brandon is trying to. I muted him when he unmuted. Sorry. There we go.
I'm just, is Steelers attire required for Scott Cole Day moving forward? Because if it is, I'm out. I'm just. Well, good luck, sir. We're going to miss you, especially the extra kick in the pants you give all of us all the time. So.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We'll miss you a great deal. And I'll find whatever you put in that car and I'll send it to you. I know you put something in there.
All right. Happy hunting. Thank you.
Yep.
Major Cole, on behalf of the Salisbury City Council, we would like to appreciate you and thank you for your years of service to our city and our community. And you, you have set a great example. Thank you.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate the kind words.
And I hope you have a nice spot on a beach somewhere picked out south here.
I'm looking.
Okay. All right. So we will move on with our agenda. At this time, I'd like to recognize our procurement director, Jennifer Miller, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the awarded bids.
The move.
Motion by Ms. Jackson, second? Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Gregory is a second. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. Very good. Thank you, everyone. This is a change order request for the Newton Street Community Center remodel. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process change order number three in the amount of $27,360.69 for invitation to bid ITB 19-120. This change order provides for the purchase and installation of windows that are required per the Historic District Commission. The departmental memo and change order are attached for reference. And I do want to call to, call to note for council, this is part of the new change order process that you all were gracious enough to accept a few months back. So as part of change orders that come in front of council going forward, if you note two pages down from mine is the actual change order form. So it does give you some real insight as to the original cost of the, the contract, the cumulative cost of all the changes and so on and so forth. So I hope that gives some more transparency to the process for council. At this time, the Department of Procurement does request council's approval to process change order number three, as noted above, to the contractor awarded the original bid, Ocean Tower Construction LLC.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any questions? Mr. Heath? I'll come back to him. Ms. Jackson, any questions or comments?
No questions, no comments.
Ms. Blake? Ms. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
All right. I will call the question. All those in favor of approving the awarded bids, please signify, please signify by saying aye. Ms. Gregory?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Heath?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Next, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3036.
The move.
Got a motion by Ms. Jackson. Is that a second by Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Glanz?
Thank you, Council. Resolution number 3036, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland for the purpose of accepting the offer from Reneer Development Company for the purchase of surplus real property located at 1141 South Division Street. Whereas the mayor and city council have determined that there is a surplus city-owned property that should be redeveloped and that there is a strong public need for increased landfill development in the city. And whereas the city of Salisbury, the city of Salisbury declared 1141 South Division Street Salisbury, Maryland surplus property on July 8, 2019. And whereas the city of Salisbury pursuant to SC 16-8 and Chapter 2.36 of the city code has the right to offer a public sale surplus property and make awards, awards in the best interest of the city. And whereas city-owned surplus or unused property should be developed, not only in consideration for the highest bid, but in consideration of the type of development, and such development should require a commitment to, a commitment from the purchaser to develop such property in a manner which will raise the city's tax base and be in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Salisbury. And whereas the city has determined that it is in the best interest of the citizens of the city to sell the city's surplus property located at 1141 South Division Street. Looks like there's a typo there on 20, line 24. Whereas the city of Salisbury advertised for proposals to purchase and redevelop 1141 South Division Street three times in September 2019, and no bids were received by the due date of October 28, 2019. And whereas the city received an offer to purchase the property on April 10, 2020 from Reneer Development Company. And whereas SC 16-3A6 of the city charter allows for the, an exemption to competitive bidding if surplus property was offered for bid, no bid was received, and acceptable bid is received within six months of the requested bid. Whereas the city of Salisbury is in agreement to sell 1141 South Division Street Salisbury, Maryland for $16,000 to Reneer Development Company following the execution of a disposition contract in terms acceptable to the city on or before September 1, 2020, as approved by the city solicitor.
Thank you, Ms. Glanz. I believe there is an amendment on this. Ms. Gregory?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion for lines four, 30, and 31, 38, 42, and 43 to strike Reneer Development Company and insert OT 2000 LLC.
We hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the amendment? Hearing none, I'll call the, on the amendment. All those in favor, yes.
I'm sorry. This is, this is Jake. Hey, apologies. Real quick, before you call a question. I just wanted to apologize, Mr. Reneer, that oversight on the name of the company that was making the purchase. That was something that we normally would have picked up. So apologies for that. And I, I noticed that I missed a phone call from you late last week. It was probably to give me warning that we had, we had gotten that wrong. So forgive our error. But again, I don't think there's an issue there.
No problem at all. I appreciate your consideration of time.
Thank you. Call the question on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment on resolution number 3036, please signify by saying aye. Ms. Gregory?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Heath?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now we'll call the question on resolution number 3036 as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Ms. Gregory?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Heath?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a, thank you, Mr. Reneer.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes.
Just a technical issue. Mr. President, there's a weird clicking noise on your phone, Jack. So I'm going to mute you if you're okay with that, or if you can mute yourself, whichever you prefer, until there's a vote. Is that okay?
Yep, I can mute myself.
Okay, that would be perfect.
I, I think that's the telegraph coming from where he's at in New Hampshire. All right. So I'll entertain a, entertain a motion and a second on resolution number 3037.
The move.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Jackson and a second by Ms. Gregory? Ms. Glanz?
Yes. Resolution number 3037, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland approving and adopting the FY 2021, 2025 Vision Zero Action Plan, whereas resolution number 2934 adopted Vision Zero as the city's traffic engineering policy. And whereas the direct, the Department of Infrastructure and Development was charged with working a Vision Zero Task Force to develop a Vision Zero Action Plan. And whereas FY 2125, City of Salisbury Vision Zero Action Plan is a guiding document for the mayor, city council, transportation staff, and the developers of Salisbury, setting forth recommendations and prioritizing projects based on traffic safety. And whereas the City of Salisbury strives to eliminate traffic fatalities and serious injuries within the city limits by January 1, 2030. And whereas the development and implementation of the plan demonstrates the commitment of city officials and various partner agencies and committees. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to begin executing various projects and strategies outlined in the plan to benefit the residents of, and visitors of the city of Salisbury. No, Mayor, you're muted now.
We have any questions or comments by council on this resolution? Mr. Heath?
No, no questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Ms. Gregory?
No questions.
And I, I think this is a great plan. And I think, like its, its purpose is to reduce the loss of life and injury on the streets of our city. And especially through our communities, where sometimes speed limits need to be reduced. So I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving resolution number 3037, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Ms. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve resolution number 3038.
The move.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Blake and a second by Ms. Jackson. Ms. Glanz?
Resolution number 3038, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to approve the amended citizen participation plan for the Community Development Block Grant CDPG entitlement program. Whereas the Maryland State Office of the United, of the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, has determined that the City of Salisbury qualifies as an entitlement community. And whereas the City of Salisbury is therefore, therefore entitled to receive Community Development Block Grant CDPG funds directly from HUD upon HUD's approval of a consolidated plan and/or annual action plan. And whereas the consolidated plan must include as one of its elements, a citizen participation plan, which describes how the city will solicit input from its local citizens during the development of a consolidated plan, the annual action plan, any substantial amendments to these documents, and the consolidated annual plan, annual performance and evaluation report caper. And whereas as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the CARES Act was passed by the federal government, which allows HUD to issue certain plan amendment waivers and CDPG flexibilities for alternate virtual public hearing procedures and expedited public comment periods during disasters and/or emergencies. And whereas all entitlement jurisdictions are required to amend their citizen action participation plan to include these new elements. And whereas the HUD regulations. Sorry. Whereas the HUD regulations concerning the development of a consolidated participation plan, citizen participation plan must be adopted by the city council. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Ms. Glance. Any questions or comments on resolution number 3038? Mr. Heath? Ms. Blake?
None.
Ms. Jackson?
Not any.
Ms. Gregory?
No questions.
I'll call for the question. All those in favor, resolution number 3038, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Ms. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 2592 for second reading.
The move.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Jackson and a second by Mr. Heath. Mr. Tillman? The other four?
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2020 general fund budget to appropriate funds needed to cover the shortfall in the November 2019 election budget. Whereas the city clerk's office received an estimate from Wycomico County Board of Elections to administer and conduct the November 5, 2019 City of Salisbury elections. And whereas the invoice amount for the services provided by STF on Wycomico County time was for significantly more than the estimate, estimate received from the Wycomico County Board of Elections, now therefore being ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the city's fiscal year 2020 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. One, increase current surplus available by $16,550. And two, increase elections, buy the elections account by an equivalent amount.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Have any questions or comments by council? Mr. Heath?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
Just one comment. I, I do think we should have written a letter and asked the county council for consideration for an adjustment. Other than that, I do see this moving forward. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Ms. Gregory?
No questions.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of ordinance number 2592 for second reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the, the fifth councilman or sixth councilman, and the chair votes aye. And the fifth councilman or sixth councilman, and the chair votes aye. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance Number 2596 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Blake and a second by Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's capital project fund budget and fund to provide additional funding for the zoo administration office space project. Whereas Ordinance 2539 FY 20 budget authorized funding of $100,000 for bond proceeds for the zoo administration office project. And whereas the Department of Field Operations has estimated additional $40,000 is needed to complete the project. Whereas the finance department has determined that $40,000 is available in unallocated interest earned on funds on the same pool of capital projects, now therefore be ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland. The city's capital projects fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase in revenue, zoo administration office space interest, and by $40,000, an increase in expense, zoo administration office space for construction in the same amount of $40,000.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
Yes, I just want to say that thank you to the administration, the staff of the zoo for putting up with that, their current residents. It's been a long time coming, and I'm glad we're getting to the point of getting this project completed. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Um, no, um, Jack said it all.
Ms. Blake?
Other than it's a well-deserved investment.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No comments.
Alright, and I concur with Mr. Heath's comments. I'll call for the question on ordinance Number 2596 for first reading. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Ms. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion and a second for ordinance Number 2597 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Heath and a second by Ms. Blake. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, this is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2020 general fund to appropriate funds for building improvements for the government office building. Whereas the City of Salisbury has determined the government office building electrical system should be improved to relocate transformers to outside the building and allow electricity to be turned off from outside should the need arise, thereby providing a safer environment within the government office building. And whereas the General Services Department of Wycomico County, who will oversee the work, estimates the cost of the necessary electrical improvements to be $55,000, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year 2020 general fund budget be amended as follows. Increase the current year surplus by $55,000. Paragraph two, increase the building by $55,000.
Screen in. I think I got muted there. Uh, I think Mr. Tillman's video. Any questions or... Mr. Heath?
Yes, I have one question. I may be wrong, but I thought that the $55,000 was to be split? Or was the total amount 110,000?
Mr. President, I'm sorry. It is the latter of the options. That's our half.
That's our half. Thank you. No other question.
Okay, thank you.
You're going in and out, Mayor. Well, this is different.
Maybe, maybe yours should call in.
Yeah, Mayor, if you could dial in, that might be helpful. How many weeks have we been doing this? Is the first major hiccup? It's pretty good.
Does... Ms. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, does... I don't know if Jack has the ability to manage from where he is. If not, I'm wondering if one of the other council members can continue. Jack, can you hear us?
Hello, Jack?
He's muted.
Jack, you shouldn't be unmuted now.
No, I'm okay. Let me see if I can get it. Hold on a second, please.
Mayor's back. See if we have better connectivity.
Is he back?
He was for a second.
Here?
It's his fancy background.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. This is weird. Everybody's screen froze. Alright, where we were... Are we still on ordinance Number 2597?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting. My phone says I'm in safe driving mode at the moment. I'm not driving anywhere. Any questions or comments on 2597? Last I talked to was Ms. Jackson. Ms. Gregory?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
Uh, no, I think Jack put... That would have been the same question I had, but I think he asked the same question.
Okay, thank you.
Because Jack was the last person.
Okay, thank you. I will call for the question on ordinance Number 2597 for first reading. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion and a second for ordinance Number 2598 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion by Ms. Blake and a second by Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend the Salisbury Municipal Code by adding Chapter 3.24 concerning a public safety officer real property tax credit. Whereas the state of Maryland has authorized the governing body of a county or municipal corporation to grant by law a certain property tax credit against the county or municipal corporation property tax imposed on a certain dwelling that is owned by a public safety officer under certain circumstances. And whereas in accordance with Section 9-260 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, there exists a City of Salisbury property tax on real property that qualifies for consideration of a tax credit pursuant to this section. Whereas there does not currently exist a provision in the city code in connection with the property tax credit for a public safety officer. And whereas the credit may not exceed a certain amount per dwelling and the amount of property tax imposed on the dwelling pursuant to the aforementioned section. And whereas the City of Salisbury wishes to establish a tax credit against city real property tax for certain real property owned by public safety officers that are full-time employees or volunteers in good standing who reside in the same location and meet the eligibility requirements set out in Section 9-105 and 9-260 of the Tax Property Article, now therefore be enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury that Chapter 3 Revenue and Finance of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code is hereby amended by adding Chapter 3.24 as follows. The 3.24.010 entitled definitions, in this section, the following words have the following meanings indicated. Dwelling has the meaning set forth in 9-105 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Public safety officer has the meaning set forth in 9-260 of the State Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Excuse me, the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. 3.24.020 Creation, in accordance with 9-260 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, there is a City of Salisbury property tax credit against the tax on real property that qualifies under this section. 3.24.030 Eligibility, a public safety officer is eligible for a city real property tax credit under this section by meeting the requirements of either 3.24.030A, B, or C, and the requirements of 3.24.030D. A, employed full-time. And under sub-paragraph A, the City of Salisbury Fire Department as a firefighter EMT or firefighter paramedic, or B, the City of Salisbury Police Department as a police officer. And Paragraph 2, the officer has completed at least one year of full-time employment. Under sub-paragraph B, serving as a volunteer member. That is, under Paragraph 1, is a member in good standing of a volunteer corporation in accordance with Chapter 2.16 Fire Department of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code. And sub-paragraph 2 meets the operational standards for volunteer personnel as established by the standard operating procedures of the City of Salisbury Fire Department. And sub-paragraph 3, has qualified as active within the previous year under the guidelines established in the length of service awards program known as LOSAP. Sub-paragraph C, the individual has received a service-related disability, retired from the job in good standing, or served as a volunteer member for more than 20 years of active service, and has become a lifetime member in accordance with Chapter 2.16 Fire Department of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code. Sub-paragraph D, the public safety officer is eligible for a credit authorized by 9-105 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland for the dwelling for which the credit is sold. Property must be a primary residence of the public safety officer. The credit cannot be combined with other operational real property tax credits as permitted under Title IX of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland or this title. Under subsection 3.24.040, the amount of the credit in sub-paragraph A says, subject to the conditions in this section, the tax credit may be granted in an amount of up to $2,500 per dwelling, but may not exceed the amount of the real property tax imposed on the dwelling. In sub-paragraph B, the eligible public safety officer shall receive, 1, in tax years beginning July 1st, 2020 and July 1st, 2021, the tax credit shall not exceed $1,000. Sub-paragraph 2, in tax year beginning July 1st, 2020 and July 1st, 2023, the tax credit shall not exceed $1,500. Sub-paragraph 3, in tax years beginning July 1st, 2024 and July 1st, 2025, the tax credit shall not exceed $2,000. And in Paragraph 4, in the tax year beginning July 1st, 2026 and beyond, the tax credit shall not exceed $2,500. Under subsection 3.24.050, application, the application annual verification to receive the credit of public safety officer shall submit an application to the City of Salisbury Director of Finance on the appropriate application. The appropriate application may be obtained from the Department of Finance. Sub-paragraph D, an annual verification form must be submitted each year to be eligible to receive the credit. The annual verification form may be obtained from the Director of Finance. In sub-paragraph C, an application for or renewal of the tax credit created by this section shall be filed honor before April 1st, immediately before the taxable year for which the tax credit is being sold. If the application or renewal is filed after April 1st, the credit shall be disallowed that year, but shall be treated as an application or renewal for a tax credit for the following taxable year. Under subsection 3.24.060, termination of credit, the tax credit created by this section shall terminate if any of the following occurs. Sub-paragraph A, the public safety officer is no longer employed full-time by the public safety agency for a reason other than retirement or service-related disability or is no longer eligible under subsection C3 for volunteer firefighters. Or, sub-paragraph B, the public safety officer no longer resides in the dwelling for which the tax credit was granted. And be it further ordained and enacted by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Any questions or comments from council? Mr. Heath?
Yes, I'd just like to say that it's been statistically proven that if you have a police or fire officer in a neighborhood, the tenure of the neighborhood changes, and they pay dividends by having them inside the city. I think this is an appropriate method of rewarding those officers, both fire and police, that choose to have residence in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. Ms. Jackson?
Um, I just think this is a great incentive for our public safety, and hopefully others will come on board with it as far as our hiring. So I think it's a very good thing.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
I think this is an outstanding gesture, and I'm all for it.
Mrs. Gregory?
I think this is a fantastic idea and will help keep us competitive when it comes to hiring public safety officers.
Thank you, and I concur with my fellow council members on this issue as well. At this time, I'll call for the question on ordinance Number 2598 for first reading. Please signify by saying aye. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. At this time, we'll entertain public comments. Give everyone a couple of seconds to either raise their hand or put in the chat so that Julia can see it. Anybody indicate they want to speak yet, Ms. Glanz?
Not yet.
While they are contemplating. I was gonna say, just right before, we will, after this meeting, we will be going into a special work session tonight. So please, council, don't go anywhere. You said Mr. Drew would like to speak?
Yes, he would.
Mr. Drew, you have a floor?
Thank you, thank you. First off, I want to thank you again for nominating me to the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And more importantly, I want to thank you for your leadership in adopting the Vision Zero Plan. I had the opportunity to sit at the last Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee where the plan was presented in great detail by staff. I think it's a fantastic plan, and the city should be commended for taking this leadership position. The one thing that I would hope that we pass on is that because of the disjointed nature of the boundaries of the City of Salisbury, quite frankly, there's areas of this plan that can't be implemented because they're simply outside of the city. So I think we need to see this as a starting point, and we need to move forward with more cooperative relationships with the county so that we can treat this truly as a vision zero for all of Salisbury, not just the Salisbury that happens to be within the county or within the city border. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Anyone else, Ms. Glanz?
Not that I'm seeing. If anybody else can't access the chat and wants to, they can unmute themselves and we'll do it that way.
They will give a couple more seconds here. Alright, so hearing none, we will... We... Do I need to take a motion to adjourn, Ms. Nichols, or not? Pardon?
Not typically. Sometimes we do, but...
Okay, alright. We are adjourned from our legislative session, and the city council is now in a special work session. And the item that is on this agenda is COVID-19. Uh, and the item that is on this agenda is COVID nineteen frontline worker stipend. Ms. Glanz?
Yes, thank you, council. Um, I guess going back what feels like a million years ago, um, when we started, uh, down this path of a new world of COVID nineteen, um, we were seeing that many jurisdictions, uh, varying in approach, but have, uh, acknowledged the hard work that our essential employees are doing, uh, those on the front line dealing with the public every day or those that may be assisting those that deal with the public every day, but still, um, at an increased risk. Um, and so we would love to be able to do, do more than this, um, because our, our, our team is out there hustling every day, um, keeping us all safe. And so we certainly appreciate that. Um, but hopefully this is a, a token and acknowledgement of, of their efforts. And so we broke this stipend down into two tiers. The first tier being, um, those that, uh, have continued to work their normal hours, their forty-hour, thirty-five-hour work week, uh, interact with the public on a daily basis, um, and meaning that their risk is high for contracting COVID nineteen. And tier two being that they work a normal forty-hour work week at work, um, but they don't interact with the public every day. Their risk is medium. Uh, so we've broken that down, um, and it's close to two hundred employees that will be getting some sort of stipend in either of those two brackets. Um, the higher bracket being seven hundred and fifty dollars, um, and the second bracket being five hundred dollars. So the, the total amount, um, comes to a hundred and fifty-one, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, so, and that's what we're asking for today. There is a portion, a smaller portion from the water and sewer fund. Uh, that's approximately sixteen thousand dollars, uh, but we can handle that with an internal transfer. If, if that's how you'd like to move forward. Um, so you can keep the breakdown in the memo of, of who's getting what. But, uh, after the announcement from the mayor's press conference last week, I had a real, got a lot of, uh, really appreciative staff, uh, that reached out, um, and were, were certainly not expecting this. Um, but, uh, happy to accept. Um, and we're, our goal is to, to work with the CARES funding that we're, we're slated to get. Um, or with the MEMA funding and hopefully get some of this reimbursed. Um, but again, that isn't a hundred percent at this moment.
Thank you, Ms. Glanz. Uh, I'll go through the council. Any comments, questions? Uh, Mr. Heath?
Yes, um, I think this is an appropriate, uh, act that we're going to, we're going to, uh, endorse. The frontline people showed up without question and I am extremely thankful that only two of our employees have tested positive. I think we're very lucky. Uh, and I think the acknowledgement of their hard work, uh, all their hard work, you know, is, is well-deserved. And I'm for it, for the motion.
Thank you. Uh, and I, I guess for the rest of the council, I'll just say, uh, any comments? And then if you're, if you give consent to move this forward, uh, we can do that at the same time. Ms. Jackson?
Um, Julia, how much did you say the downward amount was?
The total dollar, dollar figure is, uh, one hundred, uh, fifty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
I think this is a very good incentive again, as Jack has already said. And our frontline workers have really been working hard and they deserve this. Because they've put their lives on the line, so I approve it.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
Yeah, this is well-deserved. I mean, one of the things I, I love so much about Salisbury is we really look after our people. And not just our residents, but our employees. And I just think this is fantastic, um, that this is a, a proposal and they certainly deserve it. I approve it.
Mrs. Gregory?
Um, I think, I, I, I wish we could do more, obviously, um, but, you know, this is, this is a fantastic idea and, and these guys have been working hard, uh, since this started and, um, you know, it's, it's very well-deserved.
Thank you. Uh, I, I concur with my colleagues. I think this is a very well-deserved, uh, stipend, uh, and, uh, like Ms. Gregory, uh, I, you know, I, I don't oftentimes for the risk that they put, I don't think there's uh, a value that can be put on, uh, what our frontline, uh, city employees do on a daily basis. Some of them on, under very, uh, tough circumstances. Uh, so, uh, I, I support moving this forward. Uh, Mr. Mayor, did you have any comments?
Mr. Vice President, I do, if that's all right, real quick.
Sure.
Um, just, just thinking about, um, uh, the president's comments a minute ago, um, about two positive employees. We put out a, um, press release, uh, maybe forty-five minutes ago. Uh, we did, we do have three more positive firefighters that work with the one positive firefighter. Uh, they are asymptomatic, but, um, they, uh, were tested as a matter of precaution and turned out they were positive, so they're quarantining right now. And it's also worth noting that, uh, we've, uh, Salisbury fire department has transported three hundred and fifty-two of Wycomico County's patients to, uh, or positive patients to, to the hospital. Um, and eighty-one, uh, of those have been positive patients, three hundred and fifty-two patients under investigation and eighty-one positive. So, um, uh, you can see there is high risk and, um, you know, whatever we can do to show our appreciation and acknowledge that risk, I appreciate. So thank you on behalf of the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, would they, would they like to make a comment or, okay, he's. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate it. Uh, so this moves forward. Uh, Ms. Nichols, if we could put this on the agenda uh, for, on the next, uh, legislative session, which would be, uh, two weeks from now, unless we want to consider a special session for Monday night on, on the first.
Is that something that you want to do?
I, I, I would suggest maybe go ahead and put it on first reading on Monday and then we can do a second reading the following Monday. Uh, and that will speed up the getting this out.
That would be appreciated. Thank you.
All right, with that, uh, hello? Uh, any other, uh, comments, uh, from the council? Mr. Heath?
No other comments.
Ms. Jackson?
Just continue to be safe.
Ms. Blake?
Uh, please, by all means, if you are healthy, donate blood. Um, the Delmarvin Peninsula is extremely low and we need you, we need you to, to please, please donate blood.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
Just be kind to your neighbors. Look out for each other.
Thank you. And, uh, once again, I'd like to, uh, thank everybody, uh, tonight, uh, for the meeting and apologize for the minor, uh, technical difficulties I apparently had for getting kicked out of the meeting. Uh, but, uh, I, I would like to say to everyone, uh, echo, uh, the thoughts from my council members. Uh, be kind, be generous, look out for your neighbors, uh, and support our local restaurants and our local businesses uh, as we, as we start to hopefully get back to normal. Uh, be careful, uh, and, uh, and again, be kind. Thank you, and we are adjourned.